Before we go into session at 7:00, we have had one individual that has requested to be recognized for public comments, and we will recognize you at this time, and that's Ms. Rachel Rutland. And Ms. Rutland, I know you testified before, so you know that it's five minutes-
Yes ma'am.
-and you'll be timed, and when you hear the beep, that'll be the end of your time.
Yes ma'am, I appreciate that. I have this to pass out, that's whatever. Okay, good evening, Mayor and City Council, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you once again. For the name, for the record, my name's Rachel Rutland, and I'm adjacent property owner to Patrick Place, Section 5. Tonight, I'd like to go over the facts of the issue, so I'm going to read the following. During the preliminary stage of the review for this plat, this last year, around this time, the issue of perimeter lots sizes were raised many times. On October 15, 2012, the final plat of Patrick Place, Section 5 was filed with the Montgomery County Register of Deeds. The residents were not notified of the final plat presentation before the Regional Planning Commission on August 29, 2010, and were not aware of its approval until the foundations of the houses were installed on lots 323 and 324 in late October and early November, at which time I contacted the Regional Planning Commission for the final plat and lot table. Development is designated as a cluster development on the final plat. The zoning ordinance of the city of Clarksville, I refer to as the zoning ordinance as enacted in November 2010, is the, and the Regional Planning Commission subdivision regulation set forth the minimum standings for zoning and land use. Section 5, beginning on page 192 of the zoning ordinance, outlines the development requirements for a cluster development. Section 5, number 3, states the requirements for a landscape buffer in order for a perimeter lot to deviate from perimeter lot requirements. The question becomes, then what are the perimeter lot requirements? Section K of 5K explicitly states, page 194 explicitly states, "The minimum square footage of the lots excluding perimeter lots is 5,000 squares, square feet." Since this expressly excludes the lots, and this provision is only defining interior lots. As such, Chapter 4, page 82, Table 4 point, states, "Table 4.1 through 4.8 establishes the site development standards by zone district and applies uniformly to all uses within the same zone district classification. It further states, 'All applicable development shall comply with these standards and within this table unless otherwise expressly stated, or unless different standard is required by an applicable overlay district.'" Which this means, page 194, where it excludes perimeter lots and its minimum lot standards, then Table 4.2 on page 84 controls the perimeter lots requirements. Then Section 5, number 3, and, uh, number 3D and E, pages 193 and 194, further states, "The perimeter lots may be reduced in size and equivalent zoning classification. Patrick Place is a cluster development, Zoned R1, and therefore is subject to the perimeter lot requirements of R1A in Table 4.2." Consequently, the lot, uh, lot size should be at least 12,000 square feet with a minimum lot width of 80 feet. Now, if someone can tell me how this doesn't apply here, because I don't think it's ambiguous at all. Um, with that said, then there are a number of lots don't meet the minimum size of lot width, or lot size or requirement, or both. The final plat is not in fully, in compliance with the lot yield and open space calculation as determined, there are 86 lots in this final plat, and the calculation allowed for 85.7, and 85 should be the minimum lot yield, not 86. Additionally, with this development, the landscape buffer will be deeded to the new homeowners, which I predict will be a code's nightmare, because the HOA won't be required to maintain the landscape buffer but the new homeowner. The homeowner may be inclined to cut down the required landscape plantings to expand their rear yard. This seems like a backdoor to circumvent the landscape buffer requirement, which allows them to reduce the lot size in the first place. This, this request for relief, relief is not intended with malice towards the developers, including Councilman Burkhardt. It just so happens, he, along with the Weasley brothers, are the developers for Patrick Place, Section 5. Per the testimony and emails of the Regional Planning Commission, he was an integral part in the site plan decision. The Leaf Chronicle reported that Councilman Burkhardt said he, he was only doing what the RPC allowed. Though that may be true, the minutes from the October and November 2010 City Council meeting indicated he voted for the same ordinance in which is being, which is being violated. This is also true, unfortunately, of Councilman Gino Grubbs, who, who was appointed to the City Council representative on the Regional Planning Commission, who made it a point to let the public know of the development requirements during the March 1, 2012 City Council regular session, yet firmly cast his vote for the preliminary plat on the 28th of March and on the 29th of August. How then can elected official who voted to approve the law deny the accountability of it? Also, the Leaf Chronicle reported that even after those concerns were raised, Councilman Burkhardt and his partners did this because of profits. Thank you.
All right, we will now call to order the regular session of the Clarksville City Council for February 7, 2013. It is a few minutes after 7:00 PM. We will begin with the prayer and pledge. The prayer will be led by Councilman Redd, and the pledge will be led by Councilman Wallace.
Let us pray. Lord, we just thank you for the opportunity to serve. Lord, we just ask that you watch over and bless our city, our city employees, and our soldiers, Lord, that are in harm's way. Lord, we pray for our mayor and her family. Lord, help us to serve in our meeting tonight with humility and a spirit of service and truth. Lord, we just ask for your wisdom tonight. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Members, please register your attendance. Madam Clark, take the attendance.
Thirteen present, all members are present, Mayor.
We will now begin with the agenda. The first item on the agenda is the Planning Commission. Councilman Grubbs?
Thank you, Mayor. Madam Clark, will you read Ordinance 70, 71, and Resolution 33?
Ordinance 70, 2012-13, amending the zoning ordinance and map of the city of Clarksville, application of Herbert E. Baggett Jr. for zone change on property at the terminus of Poplar Court, from R3, three-family residential district, to R2, single-family residential district. Ordinance 71, 2012-13, amending the zoning ordinance and map of the city of Clarksville, application of Richard E. Stone Jr., executor Jason Doherty Agent, for zone change on property at Ringo Road and Ringo Court, from R1, single-family residential district, to R4, multiple-family residential district. Resolution 33, 2012-13, approving abandonment of a portion of Eagle Street, request of Honeycut Properties.
Thank you, Madam Clark, Mayor. I move we go into public hearing.
So move properly seconded, we're in public hearing. The next item is Ordinance 35, 2012-13, Councilman Allen.
Yes, she have in front of you the resolution. Um, I do want to make some comments, and I know we've talked about this over and over again. I do want to maybe bring out some things that, um, maybe was not clear to some. Uh, one being that we're only dealing with the, this resolution, we're dealing with the perimeter lots. Those are the lots that are in question, only the perimeter lots. And, uh, Mayor, if it's okay, I want to ask Lance a couple of questions.
Seeing no objection, Mr. Baker?
Yes, sir.
Lance, under the, um, this Section 5 of the land use development standards and procedures-
Before we go any further, we need a motion.
Motion for approval.
All right, we have motion properly seconded. I apologize. Go ahead, I'm sorry, Councilman Allen.
Under, under that, under 5, the issue dealing with perimeter lots, um, we've looked at it before, uh, perimeter lots shall meet the perimeter lot requirements unless the following buffering provisions have been provided, and the question being, what are the perimeter lot requirements? It's what it doesn't specify. And, and that's one of the arguments is that some are hanging their hat on, is that it does not specify what the perimeter lot requirements are. But if you go back in Section 4 of the same zoning ordinance, and I, I'll, I'll read it because it's real short, "Table 4.1 through 4.8 establishes site development standards by zone district and applies uniformly to all uses within the same zone district classification. All applicable developments shall comply with the standards established within this table unless otherwise stated, or unless a different standard is required by applicable overlay district." So is that, I read that as being basically a coverall. If it's not spelled out, then this chart that's been provided, it's what, it's what becomes law? Am I reading that properly?
I think that's a fair reading, an interpretation of it, but the problem is not that-
Mr. Baker, can you make sure that you talk into the microphone, so?
From my perspective, and it's, it's, the problem is not that part, I mean, that is a part of the problem. Perimeter lots shall meet the perimeter lot requirements, and they really are done, so yeah, you, you default, you would think you would default to that. I mean, I, and I think that's a good argument, and that, that's a logical argument, and that's what, uh, that's part of the argument that Ms. Rutland has maintained. But it's followed by the rest of the sentence, which says, you know, perimeter lots shall meet the perimeter lot requirements unless the following buffer provisions have been provided. And so, if you've met those buffering provisions, presumably, you don't have to meet the perimeter lot requirements. All right? Um, you know, it's, it's just, and I've, you know, we can go into private session if you want, I mean, it's, we've had, done that twice. The problem is, and as I've told you, Ms. Rutland's made a good argument, it's, it's reasonable and logical, but in my opinion, it's not the slam dunk that, that she would probably maintain. And that's because of the language in B, and because of the other factors that we've talked about, namely, that the RPC has already granted approval, and secondly, that under one of the primary main rules of statutory construction, which is what this case would come down to, any ambiguity, uh, in a, or a contradiction involving the interpretation of statute is going to be resolved against the governmental entity, if there's a governmental entity as a party, which there would be, um, and in favor of the private party. And that's just an elementary rule of statutory construction that every first-year law student learns.
And so the, the-
It's like, I guess what I was saying is that I can't guarantee you what will happen if you file a lawsuit.
I, I understand, but, I mean, and that's with any lawsuit, I mean, there, there is no, there is no slam dunk, you know? You, you go to court-
Not in any lawsuit, you're right.
Any lawsuit, absolutely, absolutely. But if we, in looking at this, and it appears to ask the citizens, and they're here tonight, several of them are here tonight, um, I don't think the mayor wants anybody to stand, I don't think you're supposed to stand, but they're here tonight, and, um, they're in their green, supporting Patrick Place, uh, they, it is not, I don't feel it's their responsibility to have to go to court and to sue for the rules that were written, and it's our job to enforce those rules. It's our job to enforce this, this zoning ordinance, and to not go to court because we could lose, or it could cost us some money. Well, we're fighting on behalf of the citizens, and I'd take my chances any day standing up for the citizens of Clarksville. We can't say we're for the citizens, and then turn around and allow developers to just do what they want. It's completely, it's completely, it, it is, it is, it's completely, um, that is un-American. And we're supposed to be looking out for the best interest of the city. And it's clear, it's pretty clear to me, uh, this case came before us last year, and the, the premise of their argument was, "We don't want the smaller lot sizes in our neighborhood. We don't want them, it's not compatible with what we have right now." They came before us, they packed this chamber out. The council sided with the community, with Patrick Place, and stated, "We see your point, we agree, you don't want the smaller lot sizes." And the zoning, the zoning request was denied. Now you go backdoor and come behind a cluster development and totally go against what reasonable minds would read and see, that this is clearly a backdoor maneuver in order to get the lot sizes smaller, the same way, same thing that was denied last year, clearly. And, and for us to, and, and I, uh, it, this is not an issue with Mr. Burkhardt, this is an issue with whomever the builder would be. If, if, if it didn't matter whose name was on the deed, if they did not follow this zoning ordinance, I would expect us as a council, once it was brought to our attention, to do our jobs and to make sure that this is followed. We all swore to uphold the law, and because it's a little inconvenient for us, and, and I know this council is not, not this council, is not talking about money in lawsuits, I mean, as much money as we spend for lawyers, fighting lawsuits, I do ask that you support this resolution, I do ask that you support the citizens of, of, uh, the citizens of this city, because this is a city issue. It's not just Patrick Place, this is a city issue.
Councilman Allen, did you have any more questions for Mr. Baker? I mean, he's sat down, so I assume you were, you've completed your questions to him?
Yes.
Okay. Are you, are you completed your statement?
Yes, for me.
Councilman Harris?
Uh, yes, uh, Mr. Baker, this question is for you, please.
I know you shouldn't have sat down.
Yeah.
Sorry.
By, by all means, the comments that I'm gonna make has nothing to do with Patrick Place whatsoever, it's pertaining to this resolution itself, and that is, the city's position in reference to filing a lawsuit against a private individual, whoever it may be, or to question the RPC. When a case come before the Clarksville City Council, when we adopt a zoning classification, on many, on numerous occasion, I remember questions being asked of Ms. Audra Smitsen, I apologize, your last name. Um, the case is, where are the driveways gonna go, how are the streets, how's the plat, and it's always said that, that, that will be determined on site review or whatever, once it goes back to the planning, after we've decided what the zoning is, and I agree with Mr. Allen, we said the zoning would be R1. City Council is done with it. Now, if something takes place afterwards, my question is, where does the city come back into being liable enough for, for the city to file a lawsuit for its citizens? Because my biggest concern is, if the city file a lawsuit, that could create a problem with the developer whereby that property sits vacant as this, as the case is being resolved, which can take up to years, and without a guarantee of the city winning, we could, we could be discussing millions of dollars at the taxpayers' expense, Mr. Councilman Allen mentioned, the citizens of Clarksville, that will be on the citizens of Clarksville. So, could you please touch on that in reference to the legal side, in reference, my question is, should the city file? That's where this is going. Where do we stand? Do we have a case in this? Because Ms. Rutland actually, if she felt that she was wronged off of Section A and not B in that gray area, whatever it may be, that provision allow her to sue for damages to rectify this. Why would the City Council participate in a lawsuit against an individual is my question?
Well, that is, of course, the very heart of the question before you is, is that whether it makes good sense, whether it's advisable, whether you should, uh, direct the filing of the lawsuit, and that's really a, a policy decision that you are gonna have to make on your own. My advice to you, as you know, has been that I don't think it's advisable. I've told you that in private session, and I've outlined for you in private session the problems and risks. Now, I've also told you, and as I just stated a minute ago, that her arguments are good arguments, they, they make, they're logical, and they may even be the best, better arguments here. The problem is, as I've stated though, that you've got this language that, you know, it says perimeter lots shall meet the perimeter lot requirements unless the following buffer provisions have been provided. So, that seems to indicate that, uh, as long as you provide the, the proper buffering, which everybody admits they have done, even Ms. Rutland has, um, then you, um, you don't have to meet the, any kind of lot requirement. So, it's just, it's not very clear, uh, but, uh, even if we concede and agree that her side of the argument is the better argument here, as I said, it's, it's not a guarantee, and it, there's a real risk here. And if you, um, and it comes down to the, basically, the rules of statutory construction. And so for me, there's a real risk that we would lose the lawsuit. And you can bet that if we file the lawsuit, we will get hit with a counterclaim for delaying the developers and the various contractors. It's not just about Mr. Burkhardt, Councilman Burkhardt, or even just his development company, WBW. There's also, as I understand it, multiple contractors out there that already have built some houses and are in the process of building others. And there may even be some other private citizens that have bought lots, uh, and so, um, you'd be suing everybody that's involved that has a perimeter lot. Now, it is correct that it's only perimeter lots, the ones that are issued here. And so, if you, uh, lose, you're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars that we're gonna be sued for in a counterclaim, and possibly, you know, a few million. And in my view, it's not worth the risk that we will lose, and even if you win at the trial court, you could get reversed on appeal. Um, e- even if we lose the trial court, then we can appeal too, so that, that can kinda cuts both ways. But, um, to me, it makes much more sense, uh, to let the private citizens, and I'm just speaking from an economic standpoint and risk standpoint, it makes much more sense to let the private citizens who have special injury or can allege a special injury and special damages to, uh, to file the lawsuits and carry the burdens and the risks that you lose, and oh, by the way, that you get countersued. And, you know, it'd be a huge risk for them too, but it, I mean, should the tax, general taxpayers take that risk? I mean, that's a decision you all have got to make. Now, I, I will say, on the other hand, Councilman Allen is right in the sense that, um, you know, you do have a duty to enforce your own laws, um, and you should do that. But because it's not entirely clear here who's gonna win, to me, the risk outweighs the, that, that, um, principle. And, you know, we've talked, some of the other things that we talked about, you may remember, that plays into the, I think should play into the decision, is the fact that, well, one thing, we said just from a practical standpoint, is, I, I don't believe the rules of professional conduct for attorneys would allow me to personally conduct it, because I'd be filing a lawsuit against someone who basically determines my pay and whether I keep my job, or sits as a part of a body that does that. The rules of professional conduct won't let attorneys do that. So we'd have to hire someone outside council, and as I've told you, that's probably gonna cost at a minimum conservative amount, fifty or sixty thousand dollars. The case would drag on at least two or three years, most likely. Um, and so you've got those factors to consider. Um, and, um, the other thing is that, you know, the, we can't really, I don't believe we can sue the RPC themselves, and that's not who the party would be. Um, but one of the thing, one of the last things I'll talk about here, one of the, one of the factors that I think that would sway and influence and play into a court's decision is the fact that by WBW has done no wrong here. They, they followed the process, they made the application, and they got an approval even. And so, if you're talking about making them suffer, even if there is a wrong committed in a legal interpretation of the law by the RPC, um, I think the court's likely to come down and say, "Well, that's city, RPC, you made a bad decision, and city, ultimately, you're responsible, because you're the one that passed the law that's messed up." And so, we're not gonna penalize this private, uh, party when they got an approval. So, that's, that's the factors that I've used to give you my advice.
And I definitely appreciate that, you the expert in that area. And I will say, I totally agree, we will enforce the law. I, I'm not trying to by no means, um, not enforce the law, but I want to remind the council on a regular basis, at least every other month, we are approving resolutions for housekeeping measure, meaning that something was written where the attorney have looked it over and found a glitch, a T not being crossed, a I not being dotted. We do that on a regular basis. On numerous occasions, you highlight something, or delete something, add some wordage. This is a perfect example where it's missing one word, or giving direction to go somewhere else, whereby I think nowhere in the world the city council should participate in embarking on something that could cost taxpayers millions of dollars. Um, thank you, Mayor, that's my-
Well, if I may add, just say one thing, you know, it is a 339-page document, so I don't wanna cast all the blame on y'all, I mean, I don't know, and I'll tell you, I did not review the whole 339 pages-
Right.
...before, uh, it was passed by the council, because frankly, I wasn't given time to. Um, the, there was a committee that wrote it, I was not a part of that committee.
Right.
But, I wouldn't blame the RPC, the staff of the RPC, or that committee, or even the council, because anytime you pass legislation that's as complicated and comprehensive, and frankly, just as long as this is, um, which is a whole lot longer than our old zoning ordinance, um, there's gonna be some things in there that people don't catch, and that you don't think of until you get presented with a concrete factual situation.
Absolutely, thank you, sir.
Councilman Summers?
Lance, just a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
Don't you get comfortable before I get away.
I just stand here.
Two things, uh, I guess the assumption is, we're going straight to a lawsuit, I mean, there could be, if there was an agreement, a negotiated settlement on those lots to reimburse, uh, the developer or the buyers of that property to try to make amends on that, so we, we may not necessarily be talking millions and millions of dollars in, in that case, is that correct?
Uh, it, well, I, I, what I think you're saying is, we wouldn't have to go directly, I mean, this does, it says, you're gonna file a lawsuit, so you'd need to amend this resolution. Um, but if you're saying, "Well, if we amend the resolution, say we want you to try to negotiate first," then you could do that, uh, but keep in mind again that it's, it's not with just WBW. I mean, you gotta negotiate with, I don't know who all the contractors are involved, and even private, I say private, they're all private citizens or private legal entities, but I mean, people that have just bought a lot already, but they haven't built yet.
Right.
I mean, you, you'd have to negotiate with all of them, um, and I don't know how that would turn out, so-
Okay. Uh, my other question is, uh, since we've all agreed, the wording's a little squirrely on this, have we notified the RPC that maybe they need to hold any upcoming cluster reviews and abants until we can get the wording reworked?
Well, Doc, Dr. Rippon and I have talked about it, and he, of course, he's obviously well aware of the problem now, and he's already worked on legislation with me, proposed draft legislation to correct this problem, um, and whether they've actually got any pending cluster developments, um, I, I don't know the answer to that, sir. Um, but before I finish with that, let me say, you know, talking about the negotiation thing, I'm not even sure how that would play out, because, um, if you, let, let's say you go to one property owner, and you go, you know, um, that's already bought the lot, I mean, I don't know how you'd re, um, you'd have to replot the whole thing, because you start moving lines around, you're affecting everybody that's bought lots and stuff, and what if somebody doesn't agree, but some others do? I mean, I don't know how you would, I just don't know how you'd even go about it when they've already gotten approval. And if I, frankly, if I'm in WBW's shoes, and the contractor's shoes too, they're building out there, there's no way I would negotiate with you, because I don't think you, you've got the upper hand.
Don't give away other companies.
I mean, I don't know, maybe they would. But Dr. Rippon, do you know the answer?
Well, wait just a minute now, Councilman Summers, are you?
Well, I, I'm, you know-
Well, I, I'm, you know, it...
I know, we've got a, we've got a lot of people that wanna be recognized, so I'm trying...
I'm not worried, but I'm just wondering, if, if we got any others, we've told them to sort of stack them till we can...
I don't know the answer to that.
Well, who knows the answer to that?
Dr. Ripple.
Well, is that, is that gonna have an effect on how you vote on this particular ordinance?
Well, no, I'm just asking the question, we've agreed that evidently the wording's gotta be changed. If he's got another cluster option coming up in two weeks, and we're not gonna meet to change the wording for there, then we may compound a...
He doesn't have one coming up in the next two weeks, he's shaking his head now.
Okay, well, okay, well, the question is, have we officially notified him? He needs to put him on hiatus till we come up with clarification?
I would hope that's what RPC's doing, but I, I don't know if they're doing that or not.
Okay, well, who needs to tell the RPC to do that? I guess that's my question.
Yeah, it is, I, I, it is, that's a whole different issue now, we're talking about, I, I agree, I agree, Councilman Red, I, I agree, I agree. Councilman Summers, we're on this ordinance, we're not on other issues, we can address those issues at some point if you want, we're on this particular resolution.
I, I've formally told him that they don't need to approve anymore till we get it fixed.
It is related, because next, at the next RPC meeting, they could have a cluster thing come up with the same thing, and we've made...
It's, it's not...
Oh, whatever, okay, thank, thank you, Lance, I appreciate it.
Let's stop arguing about this, now, let's have some order here, okay? Councilman Summers, are you, have you completed your questions?
I sure have, thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman McGoughlin?
Thank you. This has been a really tough case to look at. I, I've been torn, I can understand that the developer was doing what the planning commission was allowing them to do. And on the other side, I voted against rezoning this to R1A, which would have reduced lot size from 15,000 square feet to 12,000 square feet, and now the perimeter lots could be as small as 5,000 square feet. My heart tells me that I need to go with the residents on this, because, and, and David Allen, he mentioned the chart as well, you look at the chart, there, there's no way that you would ever think an R1 lot would be as small as 5,000 square feet. Thank you.
Councilman Wallace?
Thank you, Mr. Baker, if I could ask you a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
We've talked, we've spoken a lot about the first paragraph of the resolution, but on, on the second paragraph, we've got this language, you know, directing the Director of the Department of Building Codes to, you know, suspend, revoke, do all these things with the permits and the certificates and all that, I mean, is that something, do you believe that they have the power to do that under the, and it cites to that TCA section? We've talked a lot about kind of sort of our liability under the first one, but, I mean, if we just had him do that, do you think that continues to open us up to, to litigation possibilities?
Well, it obviously opens us up to litigation, anybody can sue anytime over anything.
But you understand my...
And I, I do, I mean, what you're really getting is, is, is there legal authority to tell the building, the Director of Building Codes, the Building Commissioner, to do these It's a close question, probably, I, I think probably you could do it, but again, it's all gonna hinge on what the end result of the lawsuit is based on the zoning ordinance dealing with cluster, and, you know, it's definitely, you're right, I mean, that second paragraph itself is, is probably even bigger problem than the first one, in the sense that if someone meets all of the requirements for the obtaining of a building permit, or for the obtaining of a certificate of occupancy, then you're prob, if you just say arbitrarily we're gonna, we're not gonna give you one, then you're probably looking at a substantive due process deprivation, and a Section 1983 lawsuit, which is gonna open you up to damages. So, and I can't tell you what, whether we would win that or not.
Travel damages under 1983?
No, you wouldn't have travel, well, actually, you wouldn't have travel damages, but you, if it's a willful violation, then it can be punitive damages.
Okay.
You know, but under that 137208A2, you know, it does say, I mean, I believe there is authority to, you know, it gives the authority to the Building Commissioner to take action, you know, to, in addition to other areas, to institute injunction, manage other appropriate action, all right? He, the Building Commissioner couldn't file a lawsuit himself, obviously, the only way that can happen is through the city proper, as an organization. So, if the city did it, maybe it would work.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilwoman Jones?
But again, the, the results depend on the success on the merits of the underlying lawsuit.
Okay. Councilwoman Jones?
I'm, I'm like Councilwoman McGoughlin, this has been one that I've really tussled with, and I, I called Dr. Ripple earlier this week and asked him very point-blank, you know, "Are we doing anything to fix this? Are we, are we, you know, obviously, there's something that the average person can read that might be wrong with this," and he said, "No," and I believe he told me they've approved four or five cluster developments since this one came to light. And my only statement would be, if, if we know there's an issue and they're not intending to fix it, he said, "Short of us telling them to do so," then I think that does, it sways my vote tonight. Thank you.
Councilman Red?
Yes, I, I remember once, years ago, when David Haynes was the city attorney, and I cannot remember the legal terminology, and of course, I'm not a lawyer, but in essence, there was some type of a similar case, and David Haynes explained it like this, if someone has gone to the governing body and for, and it doesn't even have to be as far as development concerns, and if there's a material-type liability involved in there, they've done material works or whatnot, you cannot reverse that, even if for whatever reason there was not this particular dotted I or crossed T, you can't ask them to go back and bulldoze what they've done and start over or whatnot. I, I, I wish I could remember the terminology, but I can't, but that was in essence what he said. And with that, and because this has got some legal consequences, I'd like to call for the question, if I may.
Second.
Question's been called for, that's properly seconded. Cuts off all debate except for the maker of the motion. Councilman, that's you, Councilman Allen?
Oh, no debate, but I can ask, I can ask the question.
That's it, that cuts off all debate except for the maker of the original motion, which is you, so you can make a statement at this point.
I can make a statement.
You can, I, I am recognizing you as the maker of the original motion that we're on right now.
I had another question for Lance, but I can't ask the question, but I can make a statement, is that, is that what you ruled?
That's correct.
Okay. Well, then I'll just make a statement. Under Section D of this zoning ordinance, it plainly states, "Perimeter lots may be reduced in size equivalent to one zoning classification of the subject tract or equal to the adjacent, adjacent lots, whichever is less." That's clear, that is clear. There's a chart here, it tells you, the lot sizes cannot go beyond the 12,000, whether it's per, it is clear. And, and I think that we're hiding behind, hiding behind our mistakes, and I, when I say our, I mean the city, and think we, we missed it, think we messed up, and I don't think that the citizens should be responsible for the government's mistakes. I don't think they should have to go and hire our attorney to fix something that we created. I think it's our responsibility to make it right. And if you're, if you're a representative and you're standing on behalf of your, if you're standing on behalf of the citizens, I would ask you to vote yes.
We're, we're on the motion to cease discussion.
I would ask you to vote yes, and if you're, if you're on the side of developers and home builders, then I would ask you to vote, then vote your conscience. But this is for the citizen.
All right, we're on the motion to cease discussion. All in favor of the question, vote aye. Opposed, vote no. Let every member cast your vote. Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Ten yes, one no, one abstain.
The question prevails. We are on the resolution, voting on the resolution, Resolution 35. All those members in favor of Resolution 35, vote aye. Opposed, vote no. Let every member cast your vote. Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Five yes, six no, one abstain.
That completes the agenda.